...poplar spring. Yeah. Yeah. So, the fencing, we need to address for Ricky to have an action to remove the
You mean the Pine Grove?
Yeah, the Pine Grove fencing, there were some woods there. So, we probably need to go to action. I think we've discussed it with Dr. Rice as potentially. They said, Ricky said, just put it on the agenda.
So, would we like to add that as a discussion item?
Yeah, discussion is fine.
Item K, Pine Grove?
Yeah.
All right, are there any other fencing? Okay, are there any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Next, we have the good news portion of the meeting. Dr. Rice?
It's our pleasure to recognize Mr. Chris Bottoms, Principal at Walnut Cove Elementary School, who recently completed the distinguished leadership in practice program. The program's a year-long leadership development program for practicing school principals designed by the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association and sponsored by the North Carolina Alliance for School Leadership and Development. The leadership of a school principal is by far one of the most important factors in school quality. By completing this very rigorous program, the DLP graduates have demonstrated their commitment to continuous improvement by working to improve their leadership skills as they simultaneously improve their schools. We are proud to include Mr. Bottoms in the ranks of successful DLP completers, and that is by Dr. Shirley Prince, MC Papa Executive Director. Would like to recognize Mr. Bottoms and give him a hand. Mr. Bottoms, if you'll join the board for a picture, and we will get you that certificate.
Yeah, that'd be better.
He'll come to the center where we re-arrange.
You just sat back and played point guard.
I told you. Look a little power.
Again, congratulations to Mr. Bottoms, and thank you for all your hard work, sir. Thank you. Next, we have public comments. Is there anyone signed up? Mrs. Boljack for public comments, or Mr. Johnson?
Yes, we do. We have one person who signed up for public comments tonight. There's a three-minute time limit on the presentation. Donnie Smith.
And the reason why I'm here is because I oppose the school board's decision to change start times. Puts burdens on working families. I've spoken nearly everyone, and I can't find very few that support the decision. In the last meeting, you were praising the staff on how good a job they done with the COVID task, but you do not value their input. Most of the ones that I've talked to are afraid to say anything, fear of losing their jobs, personally. I'm grateful for the job that they've done, and I truly appreciate their service to our county. On the other hand, I'm very disappointed in this board. It should be your job to interview the community. You should be the one that the teachers and staff and families go to for solutions. It should never be a job of a computer. When you survey only 1,400 people, you have 5,600 students, 25% should never determine the results of the 75%. It should be your job as a school board members to be the mediator between the state and the county on how things should run in our county. You're the only representative that we have as parents and taxpayers. Since the northern and southern districts greatly differ from the western district, you should only have surveyed the northern and southern districts since they were the only ones who were truly affected. When I'm hearing the possibility of 16 bus drivers quit, and that's disturbing, and that's what I'm hearing. You can't find replacements for the six buses that you currently have vacant. Meanwhile, you're treating these bus drivers as if they're nothing. But it takes a special kind of person to drive each group of these kids. These drivers should be treated as teachers. You don't ask the elementary teacher to go teach a high school class. Why not? For one, the licenses don't allow it. Secondly, I doubt the high schoolers would think too highly of a teacher talking to them as a kindergartner. It takes different personalities for different people. You're putting, you're adding stress to a job that's already stressful enough as it is. When you're asking someone to work outside of their comfort zone, you're asking for major problems. You're going against the foundation of the school system when you're ignoring feedback from the staff and community. Then we wonder why dropout rates increasing and test scores dropping, and why people are choosing other places for their kids to go. It has to do morale. When the confidence of the workers is no longer there, it gets passed along to the listening bodies, whomever they are. These just happen to be the kids and coworkers. When I talk to staff, I hear that I'm leaving, or how much longer do I have to retire? You know management is doing a poor job of managing whenever things like that are taking place. I believe you looked at previous decision to hire management buddies instead of hiring local people who knows the job. You're creating problems that we're facing.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you very kindly.
Next, on our agenda, we have the consent agenda. If there are no comments to be made. We have item A, approval of regular session minutes for June 21st, as well as approval of county commissioners' joint session minutes for June 10th. Were there any additions or corrections there to those minutes?
Make a motion to approve consent as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Next, we have discussion agenda item A, the interactive board replacement plan demos by ClearTouch and Smartboard.
Good evening, board members. We've invited our top two teacher choices to demo the boards that we are going to want to replace in our schools. Our first up is ClearTouch with Sarah Lowey, and David Maynard is on there as well. He's joining us. I've invited members, while she's getting ready, I've invited members who were involved in the process. They're with us, Delala Brady, Amanda Campbell, and other media coordinators, Sonya Norman, our technicians here for tech support. All the principals were invited to come as well, and to let their teachers know if they wanted to come see a live demo of the boards to know what's coming in their schools. So, anyway, here we go.
Yeah, I apologize for not being there with y'all that they want to be there. Unfortunately, we had to relax and I'm sad, as I know a lot of you. But, you know, we're still very excited for this opportunity. Been speaking with Karen, and actually, we've done a virtual demo. And just really excited. You know, real quick before I turn over, I know we don't have a lot of time here, but a little bit about ClearTouch. We are out in our headquarters in Greenville, South Carolina, so just run a little bit. Personally, I live south beyond, I live in North Carolina. And Sarah, I should take her a little more about her background, but she is a former educator as well. She went local as well in North Carolina, and she's one of our implementation specialists. And that said, when she goes in there, she works with districts, it's not enough really. I mean, we really are, they need to make all these panels, because we really truly earned it after the sale. And that's why I have a technology department that actually, if you're called at my age at the time, it's technology, which is something that some of you may have a question, but we're going to be there for y'all, actually in Greenville, South Carolina as well. And also building capacity, which, when we talk about capacity with teachers, really what we're talking about is building confidence out in your, in that classroom, that technology enhancing what they're doing. And that's for somebody like Sarah comes in and really works well with teachers. She walked through those offices. She's been in that classroom seven years, but she's now with her training for a long time. And I do want to speak to our partner, next door tech, who's not there. It's known by the area, and she's actually a certified trainer partner as well. So, the partnership that we have with them is really amazing, because you don't just get it for one side with us. You're also going to get somebody who's an absolute professional, and she has, I know they own the cell, so they know the product well, and have a ton of confidence in it. So, you know, again, we're really excited for the opportunity. We appreciate you guys' time tonight. And please ask questions, by all means, and that's why we're here. I'm going to turn over to Sarah, who really wants to just interact as possible. She's going to show you some wonderful things, and some neat things that districts will utilize all over the space, provide professional. So, I think I appreciate your time. Sarah?
All right, so we're going to keep Dave loading on the screen. He's not going to go yet, right? He's going to put it right up there on top right there. So, as Dave said, I'm Sarah Lowey. I'm the ClearTouch PD and implementation manager. And what that means is I literally go in after the sale and make sure that our customers have success. I get you set up with your licenses. I walk you through the whole implementation process. We handle your professional development. We customize what happens like, and we work very closely with you through all of that year one and year two, as you roll this out, to make sure that you get the most time in your classroom. We're really heavy on services and support. As David said, I used to be a teacher. I taught middle school and high school social studies, and I'm from Norfolk, Virginia. Okay, so we're heading down here. And I was a teaching teacher for about 10 years, and I've been in the industry for about 10 years during this. I think what we do at ClearTouch a little differently is we're really invested in that teacher experience. So, you're going to see us really heavy on that end of your support, and we conduct professional development in a unique way. We also have built out a ClearTouch Certified Trainer Workshop that allows districts to build capacity. That Certified Trainer Workshop is aligned to ESSA, which says that professional development should be ongoing, collaborative, job-invested, sustainable. So, we want to build your in-house experts, and we work with you very closely to build out that sustainable PD plan that just works for teachers. I know what it's like. I've been in the classroom where new technologies dropped on me, and I got a two-hour training that spun my head, and I went back and had to deal with, you know, alternative high school kids, and referrals, and everything else. And so, it's really about meeting your teachers where they are. We meet our students where they are, and so, we are really invested in meeting your teachers where they are. So, this is a Windows 10 computer. That's what you're looking at right here. It's just a big Windows 10 touchscreen computer, and that's really important when it comes to teachers adopting new technology. If they're already working in that Windows environment, they connect that existing desktop computer, they put our software on it, they open up their Google Docs. I made this zoom call. I have a video lab in my home. Well, it's my daughter's house. I haven't been in my home, so I travel to Chesapeake every day. But I have a video lab where I've been doing professional development with teachers since last year. And so, really, our teachers were calling you, okay, how do I do a Google Meet, share my screen with ClearTouch panel? I'm like, here's how you do it, you know, and I would get on there and walk them through it. And that's what's really important about this Windows environment, because it is that Windows environment. Sorry. Teachers can just fire up that Google Meet, share their screen, and whatever they're doing, the kids of whom are going to see. So, we're showing you that example here. They just want to zoom call, so it doesn't matter what that video conferencing is in that Windows platform. We do implement all of our software. You're not going to pay any ongoing subscription and recurring costs. You're going to receive three key softwares. The first one is called ClearTouch Command, and that is your remote management console. We will custom build that cloud account, and you can add your IT department to remotely manage all of the ClearTouch panels across your district. You can log in. Anyone can log in. You can put multiple users in that cloud account, you can assert access. You can send messages, emergency messaging, text messaging. You can remote in and switch inputs. You can tell all the panels to turn off and shut down at certain times of the day to conserve your energy. That's all included. Now, that runs off an app on the Android OS of the panels, so all Android, or excuse me, all ClearTouch panels, small panels in the industry, have the native OS of Android. Teachers can always jump over there, use some of those native tools. We lost an agent, we mentioned back there. We have an on-screen toolbar right here that's really locked up, ready, tools to use. So, I'm going to go ahead and hop back over to that PC environment. So, when you're connecting your computer, it's going to be HDMI one or two, but in your command account, you can actually rename that port, or then input it, and that input will say computer, teacher, computer, whatever you want. Some utilities you can do like that. So, that command account is a cloud account we build custom for you. You can build all of your panels. We also give you ClearTouch collage, which is your casting. It is device-based. It works on anything. You would just need to connect their app. It works on Chromebooks, which I understand you should device with Chromebooks. You can cast six Chromebooks simultaneously, and soon to be nine. And the next version, or best next iteration will be nine devices simultaneously, and the screen will just divide itself. So, I have my phone right here, and I think I'm still connected to the network. So, I'm going to show you what that looks like. If you have an iOS device, and you guys want to play around with this later, you can actually find ClearTouch collage in the Apple Store. I cross every of the dark side of an Android person, so you can go to our website and download the Android if you want to as well. There, I can start now. I have permissions mode, which means students can't just randomly cast to the panel. Now, I'm walking around the room, and I'm casting from my phone again. Teachers can cast from their devices. It's all happening across your wireless network infrastructure. I can even do some neat things like this. Now, I have a live document camera. Maybe the students are working on a project over here. I have it displayed up here on the ClearTouch panel. I can pick up my pen, and view that content, and then push it to my cloud account if I want to. So, you know, I just can act on it myself, it is. So, as every device connects to the ClearTouch panel collage, it'll just pile the screen out at the six times. Okay? The teacher can also manage that. They can connect multiple students simultaneously, and you can see the student device name will sit right there on the list. So, I can actually make this by managing device and walk around the room and clip students to show up on the panel. They better be ready. Ready? I'm walking around, great job. Show the rest of the class, walk through the process. You know, what are you thinking when you created this? So, it's a great way for students to showcase their work in their comfort zone, social distancing. Had a lot of teachers using that for students to stay in their safe space, share their work up to the panel. And now, I use the students' work to continue to teach and learn in the classroom. So, that's collage. And then, the last thing we give you, actually has two pieces to it. We give you our Snowflake software. So, Snowflake is not your traditional whiteboard software. It is really built for student collaboration, and it's built with a different philosophy inside of our GMI. And teachers do not have to create a Snowflake file or a Snowflake, you know, presentation to use it. I literally can open it up. I have a website here. I have a blank whiteboard here that I type some stuff on. This is another whiteboard here. But I can open it up and access my Google Docs. Sign in to my Google Docs, or my Google Slides right up here, which might contain all here in one landscape. We can divide the screen into multiple simultaneous zones in Snowflake, and that allows us to do things like that tabletop. So, we also have some other configurations. So, let's pause for a second. I'll take this to COVID. My teachers, is that okay, Sarah? I want a whiteboard, and I want my Google Slides, and I want my websites, or whatever. Like, here's how you do it, and you're sharing your screen. Cue it all up. Cue it all up. Save the layout, and then call it up at any time, share your screen, and then you can go in and out of the screen for these zones pretty easily and seamlessly. I can also, in the canvas, which is the whiteboarding app instead of my software, call it a live multiple webpages. When I was a social studies teacher, I missed a lot of online content, and I would tab, right? Multiple webpages across the bottom of my computer screen, and I would get lost. I said, Gary, let's be honest, my computer was probably screaming at me. Well, I could actually go ahead and cue those all up, save this file for the rest of the day, and open up that one, let's go through it. It's all there for me. To your teachers' views, YouTube content. We have the ability to pull in a YouTube video right here in this one canvas, and I can't talk and type at the same time. So, maybe I want, thanks, Dave. Maybe I want a video on primary sources. We're learning about primary and secondary sources of activity. And I can upload that, and it might be a YouTube filter, so let's see if it's on. Yep. Believe that one. What happens when I pull in that YouTube video? Is I'm going to hit play, and we are taking the ad off the front. It's going to go right into YouTube. We are taking, it's not going to stop the video and play an ad, and it's not going to show anything crazy at the end. We've also taken out the recommended playlist, and we've taken out the comments. So, now, I've got this YouTube content clean, free of those ads that can be questionable for me as educators, and I'm not going to go over to the desk and shut my computer off in the middle of instruction if something happened. It's all there for me. I can cue it up, save ads. So, again, taking that back to the philosophy, teachers don't have to create anything ahead of time. I'm going to do it all on the fly in a moment. I could, if I didn't hear one word of Snowflake, I can just go into Windows, QFMI, Google Dash right in here in the front browser. Okay? Another thing we have in the Snowflake software, and that piece is really important here as well, on the full screen. In the Snowflake software, we have lessons activities app. So, the lessons activities is a community of interactive, engaging lesson activities that really need that student practice component of lesson plan design. Okay? So, it's for that student practice moment. I run my direct instruction using my Google Sites, my PDFs, my websites, whatever it is I'm already using, and now I want the students to practice. I can go into that community on the fly and remote and search for anything in here that's already there. There are thousands of lesson activities. There's an entire team, we call them New Tech teachers, the New Tech content team. They are actually full-time teachers that work part-time for New Tech. It's a global content development team, so you'll find stuff in there in different languages. It's really good. It's really good for some of your foreign language teachers. They like to go in there and find content in a native language. But it's an activity community repository with you. So, I can go in there and then search for, I have filtered for some for elementary right now, so if I'm confused, you want to, but I can go in there and search for content in that community. I can also log into my cloud account. But right here, it's kind of hard for you guys to see, but there's something that says sign in to Snowflake Web. There is a web piece that is connected to this. You receive five Snowflake web accounts for ClearTouch panel, and it's designed like that on purpose. We don't want your wild licenses, and we want you to be able to get access to your teaching teachers, your sped teachers, and your curriculum people, and to even your, I guess I'm a shirt, so we have to substitute teachers access to Snowflake Web. So, it's really designed to be something that grows about exponentially for you. You manage those licenses in-house. We don't care if they have a ClearTouch panel or not. You can give them access to Snowflake Web, and they can do some really cool things in Snowflake Web, not just search the community and build out my content, but in the web account, I can go in here and set up my classes. So, I think some of your schools are using YouTube Classroom. So, we have a Google Classroom. All right, I think I got logged out because it's at here so long, I just logged back in. We have a Google Classroom integration, where I actually will pull in the student rosters, and teachers can just click through a wizard. Can't type and talk at the same time. And set up their classes. Once they have their classes set up, they can send any of that interactive content to students to complete on their browser-enabled device. So, imagine this. You may have a group of students working at the ClearTouch panel in multiple zones. You have two zones side by side. The students are doing interactive content, or racing against each other, or maybe you have one activity in one zone, and separate activity in another zone, and the kids switch off, right? So, it's like a station rotation or a center. Yeah, there's interactive content ready to go for you guys in there. Maybe you've got that going on, and you've got other kids working on an activity you sent them to do on your class. Okay? So, now, you've got everybody in class engaged, and the student account actually allows students to not only complete the activities I sent to them, but students can build their own activities. Probably over the last year, we've learned more than ever before. That students love to create content, right? They love to create content on the internet, whether we walk them to or not. So, we give them that ability. So, I'm going to go right in here to many students, and see that real quick. And there is that more good classroom roster integration. They just pull in their rosters, and the students would sign in with Google. That's hugely important. They don't have to remember any additional credentials. Students would pull it up their Chromebooks, go to snow.live, which is the same website the teachers go to. They choose sign in, sign in with Google, and they're right into their dashboard. So, I'm going to walk you through real quick what that looks like. Here are my lesson activities. Oh, by the way, the teacher wanted to create. This was by, because that differentiation for teachers, right? When I said we meet teachers where they are, there's existing content in there for those teachers that go, I just want something that I can use right now, please. There's content in there for your teachers to stay well. Then you're going to have teachers that go, you know what? I found something in the community that I want to edit to meet my needs. Anything that you find in the community and teachers, as soon as they employ it, you edit it to meet their needs. So, now, we've got that to achieve, right? And you have those teachers that say, I like this, I'm looking a little bit. Then you're going to have, I probably mention teachers, and I want to create my own, because I don't, I just, I know what I want. And these are literally templates, guys. There are 16 different lesson activity templates. I think on this for assessment, you can grade with those if I want to. All of them can be sent to the students in practice mode. So, once the activity is actually sent to the student, then the student will log into their account. So, I mean, this is all included. There's nothing additional here when it comes to that. You can actually take this one, send to students, because they're already set up my class. This is what I love about the ClearTouch solution, and that is the ability to differentiate. I was an inclusion teacher. So, I have students in my classroom that had different needs, seventh grade social studies, but I still had to make sure I met their needs. So, I don't have to send that activity to everybody. I can send it to just those students in class that need it. Okay? So, I'm going to click now, click now. I can set a send date for today or in the future. I can also set a due date if I want to, and then choose student assignment. In the student dashboard, just the student dashboard right here. It's a copy of the browser. So, I can bring them both up together. In the student dashboard, that assignment will sit there, and students will hit play. Now, again, they're on their Chromebook, they're on their browser-enabled device. They can even do this on the phone, as I can predict. It was going to log in, complete this activity. And at this point, students will just drag it off, answer that content, and then it'll submit. The students will get that question by question right now. Here, Ms. Lowey is going to be Matthew. But then do that. And then the teacher can go back and go through that progress and see that individual, individual student data. And not only can I see that individual student data, but I can also send feedback to that student. And I can personalize feedback. I can say, you know what? I can send text feedback, but now, which wasn't asked, that was after us last April, I believe, right after the little fellow part on the wall, and our teachers were using this for their note burning needs. We want the ability to send audio and video feedback to, because we only had text. And then about three weeks, we had that capability. That's what's really cool about our software partners. They're pretty responsive to what teachers request, and those teachers continually get added. We're not going to charge you anything extra for any future testing from the future. And that's all included in the price per count. Okay? And then the last thing you can do in that cloud account is you can do live on our app and polling. And I think I just jumped right in, because my nerves got better at me, but we certainly do have the ability to do live polling, so if you guys would do me a favor, go ahead, and if you have your phone with you, you can take out your phone, open up the camera app on your phone. I put my teacher pad on, guys. And all you have to do is hold your camera up to that QR code, and then a little webpage will pop up. You just tap that webpage to join, or if you want to just open up the browser, you go to ansr.it/7778. And then, as you guys join, I'm going to give a little message that you're joining here. It's going to go pop, pop, pop. I know it's asking for your name, but I promise you, I won't show anybody's names on the screen, okay? It's all going to be completely anonymous. We have had multiple teachers over this past year using this to connect with their kids. We have had multiple teachers over this past year using this to connect with their kids in and out of the classroom. It's super good for easy. I have a teacher in, was in San Diego, early college high school. And she said, Sarah, I have 16 kids at home, 16 kids in class simultaneously. I got to teach them all together. How do I make sure the kids at home are with me? Well, I showed her polling. And there's a, you know, there's one poll question right in here that allows me to take a picture and send it. So she had, it was math, algebra, or college math. And she had the kids work out the problem at home, take a picture and send it to the panel. And so now the kids in class and the kids at home felt really connected. So now that you're all are connected, thank you for joining. You can continue joining by using that join from there at the top when you choose begin. And this is just a text question type. So just like all of your other polling tools that your teachers may have used in the past or may be used now, and that's fine, they can continue using those. We have multiple choice, we have choice polls. We also have texts up to 160 characters. So you guys can just go ahead and type in your answer. And I promise you, it's going to be completely anonymous here on the screen. Okay? It did ask you for your name when you joined the poll. And so that just means later, if I wanted to, I could export a CSV and see how all the students responded and take a look at that data, analyze that data, use it to drive line structure the next day for the class if you use it as a form up, like use this as an exit ticket. So teachers are comfortable with and understand the use of new technology. That's huge. User friendliness and easy to navigate. I am literally a Windows environment in a Chrome browser right now. And I have conducted hundreds and hundreds of PhDs, thousands of teachers. And when I show them how to do this, it's usually one or two, five or 10 minutes. Here's how it works and we're off to the races. Intuitive is really what it needs to be. Ease of use, ease of use, ease of need, user friendliness, teachers, teachers, students, ease to an accessibility. We do have some audio, ability to put audio files built into those lesson activities. There's also audio files that will be in. Some of those pre-built lesson activities as well, which you can insert audio. You can insert your own video. You can just create your own videos and put it in that lesson activity. Ease of use, ease of use, exciting. It's the teacher's needs. So thank you for that. And this is what we're really proud of. We're proud of that support we provide you. We led this conversation, started this conversation by telling you how much we are invested in your support and we certainly are working here through that whole implementation process with the media. Dave, any questions?
Well, you know, I definitely want to ask the teachers questions real quick. Just kind of capitalizing or, you know, locating a couple of those things there is, you know, we talked about clearly the three Cs we've covered quite a bit today. We've covered it, you did a good job and deserve. Command, logic, data. Commanded us so much. It is growing, it's constantly evolving. It's going to have an immersive notification capability. We have that now, it's going to be able to work with existing immersive notification systems. If that addition signs, we're seeing one more of that on campus and how great it is. And so we're excited about that. But, you know, I think one of my better pieces is that collage base, the data flow. I was at K-12, I was a very A D kid. And so I really struggled with the classroom and I did obviously a good praise. As a guy of logic, I got to figure out, I don't know about how I work and, you know, if I learn. And I think what I liked about collage is when I say that I have a meeting and teachers come walk around the room and their little walkers have a fun in that classroom. And now they're learning the logging and they're seeing this, but they are able to interact. That's, I figured out how I do the collaboration. I was pretty, my retention of the book was so high on test scores and all. There was that positive correlation and all of those things. And I think that's what I love about collage. It's one of the things I always have to show along, you know, so it really does end up in it was that teacher worked with students, but it empowers those cases now. Does that relate there actually? You know, they're a little bit in the mission now, you know, the same day. I'd actually like to give you a little bit of that to this session. I just agree with you. I think that's just such a great tool in this school that issues and gives the classroom to the process that I love on that. But that's just sort of, you know, kind of the evidence. Those are some good, are there some questions that you all have? That look good.
Yeah, first up here.
I've got an ad store.
Warranty and product availability.
There you go.
Yeah, what was the question with what's the warranty?
And product availability.
Yeah, and so, yeah, those are the, so what was the question? On the warranty, it comes with a three-year and a ten-year extended, and it's a five-year. You guys are looking at that quite a bit volume, which is, we would have put that to a computer's panel, which is, that would give you guys a couple of fibers on that. And as far as availability, you know, you guys have really had a couple of the sizes. Whether it's sixty-five or seventy-five. It's a challenge for us, there is no doubt about it. But we're also, we're getting ads in every week. And we do have a back line right now where we're meeting orders and maybe not. So, you know, what's the timeframe at the end of the day? That's really where I would put back on you guys because I will tell you that uphill it is, it's probably looking at more obvious type of delivery day, so. Depending on the size of that, I agree with that question.
Yeah, and just to look at it, I guess, this is the only one I had in my hand. It's been open this morning, unfortunately, it's in Frank's new K+. I have video of K+ and I do believe you have your K+ under this, so it's a lot of gray. So if Dave needs to write back on another K panel, yes, just tell him I'm back online. I usually don't do this, I usually, so this is a different version of the panel than I think. This is, sorry, this is one that actually goes with K+. So this one has the edge edge box. So even if I'm looking for these, our classroom, we log into these tabletops instead of last, you last, you guys have to check out the areas. Because this will actually, this will stand first in tabletop. Now, if we was in here and showing you, I said, so you're going to use the tabletop of that place. So just saying. How far is this courage to be K+? So Dave, we're going to take you for a ride, okay?
Let's go. I'm getting done, I don't worry.
Alright. So it literally, and it's. And it goes down. And then it goes down. So it's pretty unfortunate that I have the old Clear Touch panel. Like it's literally a remote control that you really don't sort of, are a brand of, of that business. You just hold down button and remote button simultaneously and it literally goes down into that tabletop. I mean, it goes a little faster. I have Gen 1, Dave, just so you know, I have Gen 1 of this for listening. Dave can break you down to the other one.
It actually, the newer generation knows much more. So if you have a child who was a short person, wheelchair, and they were going to ask, you know, it's nice to ask them. Feel alright, take it slow. That's one point. You know, there's plenty of studies out there that support how critical standard is when you're on, really critical, right? But our new K+, they actually come with a support on the soundbar. And this is, it has two 10 watt speakers, you know, fifteen watt over. And to say it fills your classroom with understanding at half, halfway of the volume, you can do, they'll actually fill that classroom. So you can open that in a bigger, you know, it's, it's someone's Irish dish as well. It was also, because I'm not saying you put it in a office or anything, be crazy about it. That's not good, so, or those, those right in classrooms, you know, classrooms. Dave will absolutely fill that up.
So that's the tabletop, but it's actually a stand that, that's my school's, my, they go send it to the top. It goes faster for all those lessons.
I like that one. That one's a good one. And it already goes with some stuff already.
We have very short panels for every season. And that's the question I was wondering how I can come through. So we have the forty-three inch, I do believe Dave has some of these as well. And this is the one that puts our pre-K. So it's the forty-three inch that goes to the tabletop and it's on, we call it the mini vertical. So it's this kind of squeeze down, it's a miniature for the littles. And so Dave actually has one of those. Do you have one on a mini vertical stand or do you just have the forty-three day?
I did, yes, sure.
Perfect. So you can see here, I have Lily and Julie, and it's two years old there. She's my other grandmom. Daughter, and then I have four-year-old and two-year-old grandson that makes this. So we can accommodate all of that. Mine is that Gen 1, so it's a little bit high. And that's one of the things we heard, we could go lower. So we have, the new one does go down lower for those kids, the elementary kids especially. And then also if you go with the silver, so it accommodates students in wheelchairs. And it does have this seat case at the bottom. So wheelchairs can roll up too, and this is for your classes. So we make sure that accessibility is really important for students. They'll have different versions of that thing themselves. But again, you may not just pull up on every classroom. Certainly hard to manage in places for junk out scenarios, we've seen a lot of districts will do that. I have, I have a high school that actually bought those little tabletops and they use them in group work. So they have a three or four classroom and the kids are working, casting to them and collaborating with those smaller groups and over the campus as well. But it's something to keep in mind.
I've got a couple of questions I'd like to ask. One is how many kids can interact at the same time? I saw four, but can more than four or just, is it limited to four or what?
So you can go in for simultaneous zones, but the panel itself will take up just twenty-four to simultaneously touch. So I will have teachers open to as few students in every zone as they're, you know, touching and finishing.
Okay, and the other question is our licensure. How long are we licensed for with your product and renewal and all that type cost?
There's no rental. It's a license forever for the life of the panel. And even if the panel goes bad, you can still get your Snowflake licenses. And this panel just died out, it's simply fifteen years long.
Okay.
There is no annual subscription, there's no renewal. If you order those licenses to you, if you show you have managed the main house, it's a CSV of what that you can do every year, every last year. If you want to do that, to refresh your users, pull out teachers, put in new teachers. It's, it's pretty easy that way. We don't want to make sure that, we don't want everyone that we also want to make sure that you get. That's something you can buy for a panel, right? Maybe you forget to do the refresh, you know, every year. So you're still, it's going to be experimental. You're probably going to lose a license.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions? This is our purple board with, for, yeah. Buy for a panel, buy for purple board, yeah. So you buy fifty, I want to find, you get two hundred and fifty, so. And again, that's all perpetual, there's no annual process version. You know, I was a teacher, I was an English teacher. I've said to teachers in my classroom, I said, forget the teachers that use push-ups in my classrooms. That's really important to you, how they, everybody in your district, like I said, even your construction home, it's like, I just go to, or, or some classes, pass a license. It's principals love using the polling for those needs, by the way. Just use that now there, or use that anonymous polling. So you guys have to name it. I could have punched that loss. Everyone made that calling put the anonymous. So now you can get some honest feedback from parents. I have teachers using it for conference night or for the house. It's a put in anonymous. You can also deploy those polls in just in that joint hook, put it in your new classroom and leave that hall open for three days or two hours or whatever and tell students to this, this conference, to fill out the, and substance, really creating, all having this task and having, and he's up there. Any other questions?
To interact with, because you said it's a Windows 10, but if we opt not to purchase the onboard computer, how does it interact with the educator's PC that's in the room? Is it just HDMI cabling?
Yeah, because HDMI and touch cables, so there's two cables. Touch cables only USB, USB C or ITC, USB. So you can USB and HDMI that. And that's usually something that they'll do on install, right? And then that literally just becomes a second, a second part.
But it's an interactive monitor still, even though we're using our PCs.
Yes, yes, sir. And if you wanted to run in standby, you could, and those teachers would just appear, right? And it just, you have their teacher stuff and not show it from their comp panel, but it literally, I've screened it on, just do that, it's the same thing.
Are we still able to use phones, tablets to sticky into the Clear Touch monitor and play it through the, so we?
Yeah, yeah, what I've got, are you talking about for remote learning?
Well, I'm tempted, let's say the teacher wanted to walk around the room holding her new Samsung Android tablet, but yet we're not running your onboard computer. We're using the classroom's current existing computer. Can we still, she drive everything from her tablet, her phone, whatever, his or her?
Yeah, with collage.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so in collage, again, that's our casting, but I can also hear the panel back to my device. That's a, that's an opposite direction. So I can cast up and I can take this and put it on my Android tablet and then walk around the room and that makes me remote as well.
But without the, without the onboard PC, what I'm getting at, let's cut to the chase. Without the onboard PC, we lose no functionality if we're using our PC.
Correct.
Okay.
You'll install Snowflake software on there. The teachers will run it out Windows environment. The collage runs on Android. That casting runs on the Android device.
Okay.
So you don't even have to worry about any of that. That runs that, that's an app that goes to the top of your page, when you have Android made a target, it's one of those Android education things and everything else on inside. So that way, I can connect to your app, I'll still have a collage, I'll still have.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
So to connect, I said something, to that, we don't have the offer. I will not have to have losing devices, maybe they can connect.
Yeah, it would just connect, yeah, it would connect to that collage, ask me if I had it on Android. And instead of showing the hands right here, I would mirror the panel back to you. It's back. And then you'll be able to access it just here, you can see it all, so you don't have to be on the side.
This connection wireless?
For the casting, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that all happens from the wireless network infrastructure. So is that you got in mind?
Let's just make sure we didn't have Bluetooth crashes.
Yeah, yeah, no Bluetooth at all. It's literally the connection and it's pretty solid. So that collage, Dave, who speaks now, with it, that collage and how it's, you know, it's, they can do it. Okay, so, I'm on, I'm on a loss. Uh, but collage is our, it's native to Clear Touch, right? It's built by the same people that build our panels and it's built right into the native operating system. How long does that mean, right? And it just works. It's routed simple and it just works. I have been at three and a half years of Clear, so I've got one, the, the collage, because the teachers can be powered out of the air, have a physical access. We talk about it, the, we practice it, but I don't have to spend, you know, two hours showing my videos. It's just, that was a long answer, you're welcome. Any other?
Thank you.
Mary, go on.
I'd like to say thank you for coming and doing this demonstration. Thank you a lot to come up here and do this. And I'm so excited that our students and staff and faculty could have the opportunity for such great technology. You know, had it up, they, we certainly do need that. And I really do appreciate your contribution tonight.
Do you have another question in the back?
Yes.
Another question in the back? Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, I was trying to take the floor. I let, I don't want to say it, I let you. You just have to choose a lot, that's a good way. They can put them on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're, you're fine. So for your phones and your tablets, you drive in your device. This is how you play, who's that?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, so students are not allowed to have you touch these, they have, because I've touched.
Yeah, now you can add, it'll go to the wall. Okay.
No, no. No, no.
Yeah, you would have to have more. Like I said, you can walk around rooms, see the class list, and those students. And they have to do all that, which is, right? Alright, Dave, I don't know if you can still hear me or if we lost you, are you there?
I don't know, I can hear.
There. One more question.
Yep.
Was there another question?
Yes.
This final one.
Is that based on that homework, or is it based on stuff from the others? It's all in the cloud and you actually will connect the panel with an app on the Android side. side of the app. So there's an app, we give you a unique code to put in the Android app on the Android side. And then from the app, it goes up to the cloud and it connects. Now, I'm not as technical as I think your question is, so if you could just write it down for me and I'll send it off to our tech support team and get you some exact answers to that, because I think you're probably talking a little more technical today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the transition, do we need a minute for a break or are we good to slide right in?
Ricky's saying yes. I think Ricky's shoulders better, his kidneys are killing it.
Oh, well, Dr. Ryan, where's your mind?
Uh, this one is good, so.
Yeah.
Anywhere you want to, I just asked you. Want everybody to have anything?
Thank you, Sarah, for that. We appreciate that. Um, now we have SMART. Justin Stevimer is here with SMART and Maria Klein is here with Smarter Systems, so thank you.
Well, thanks for coming to the conference. We're here in Chicago, New Orleans, Carolina. Uh, my name is Justin, I work for Smart Technologies, uh, the manufacturer of this smart board that you see, uh, Smart's been around for forty years. The defensive category is interactive slash installation. We've been in your district for years, personally, I've been in Porches District for about eight years. Uh, so that's a little bit about me from Denver, North Carolina, down to Lincoln County. And with me, uh, we have Maria Klein, who is with Smarter Systems. Uh, Smarter Systems is our local integration partner, uh, that would handle the installation and so continues with us today. I may call on her a few times about this. All right? Uh, do you have anybody see the panel, okay? Have you got, if you want to sit with that, you can bring it down, we need to hear.
Yeah, I think we need this here.
Well, I wasn't worried about it either. We need, we need, well, you guys still get back there, you're getting hurt. Uh, I gave each of you a, a package and you'll find that package on your desk. Thanks for giving that. As I mentioned, Smarter Systems is our local integration partner, so your official quotes will come from them for the purchase of the installation and the products. Uh, that being said, uh, Smart Technologies has made an offer to Stokes County schools and you can read through all this package if you want to. The important details of that are highlighted on the very first page under the executive summary. Uh, quickly, just as a few of the questions came up earlier, uh, what we are offering to the district is a district license to our software that is all inclusive, all encompassing for the lifetime of the hardware components, okay? Uh, over a ten-year period that would equate to approximately a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars savings for the district. Uh, below that, we're offering a seven-year assure warranty. Uh, assure warranty is just the name of our warranty. What that includes, uh, as part of the assure program, is access to advanced remote troubleshooting directly from Smart's, uh, tier-two and tier-three support technicians. Uh, that also includes, uh, Smart paid in the case we identified something needed the RMA, we would handle two-way shipping, we would also pay for Smart authorized technicians to come on site, take down the bad getting, put the new one on the wall. So all begin with by Smart here for seven years. Uh, you'd also have access to Smart's remote management for the lifetime of the warranty, or the life of the warranty. Uh, Smart Remote Management is going to give you as administrators central, uh, commanding control of your fleet of Smart panels. And I'll give you kind of a, a quick glimpse of what exactly that looks like. Uh, finally, last one, what I highlight here is offered by Smart is a complimentary professional development package delivered by Smart. Uh, there is many different pathways that could look like. What we would do is work with the district technology team, instruction technology team, C and I, and figure out what that needs to look like. Is that a series of face-to-face lessons? Is that a trainer model? Is that smart supporting in the background with virtual settings? That's kind of the, uh, very high-level details of the offer package from Smart Technologies to the district. I have a second question on the end of one, are we pulling them in? Where do you guys want to be? Okay, then I'll go ahead and move on, okay? What you're looking at here for you is the panel, the technology department is about looking at Smarter. It's called Smart MX two seventy-five, uh, seventy-five because this one is seven dimensions. The name of this is the MX series. Uh, the important thing to note about the MX series is that it's made in fact by Smart, part of the software is built by Smart. You're not going out to other parties and you want to say software made wherever, everything is done in-house by us, okay? Um, and with that, we tend to harness on the power of connection. What we want to do is kind of build this, you are existing, you're close, that you already have and it takes you very comfortably. What do I mean by that? I mean that it's tied into your Google credentials that you already have, okay? Uh, you'll notice in this upper left-hand corner, right up here, I'm actually signed into the panel, you can see I've signed in here, I did this previously to save a few minutes, right? Uh, but if I wasn't signed in, it'd be a little smiley face up here, I click on that and then I get the option to just click sign in with Google, okay? All I'm going to do at that point is use the existing Google credential to teachers already have. And then I use that, uh, Stokes County email address password. And what I've done when I do that is I'm signing into it. I'm essentially creating a user profile, if you will, that is tied back to my Google Drive. So that when I sign in to this panel, uh, all of these applications that you see over here on the recent files, everything is tied to that user profile. Um, so say if I sign out, when you start heading and sign in with your user profile, everything will populate according to, uh, that user profile that you've assigned to.
So if I'm a teacher in a high school and my classroom is three different classrooms, I sign in, my stuff shows up wherever I go.
Yes, sir, that's the idea. Yes, that's exactly the idea, okay? And how we do that is leverage the, uh, power of the cloud in order to do that, okay? Um, but this is what it looks like, okay? So I told you I've signed in with a, uh, Google credentials, email address here. Really easy to get started. All I'm going to do is drop into this file, you see right here? Let's say to this, uh, dropdown, my files there, you can see this is integrated already with Google Drive, which maybe teachers are already using. Click open Google Drive right here, it's taking me out to my Google Drive. You can see this leverages, uh, the idea of a simple sign-on, right? So I'm asking teachers to sign in one place, I want them to have to go to another place to sign in again, it's just wasting transition and instruction time. So I'm already signed in here and as I'm out here, right, uh, you like to be able to work and play with any file type that teachers may be using, okay? So right now, I want to pull up, say a Google Slide file, if I want to do that, click on this file here, click, and then this summer fun Google Drive file I also can pull up and I can teach my Google Drive file, okay? Uh, but the other thing that I can do from Google Drive, say I want to grab a file that's out of your cloud storage, have it delivered to the device itself, it's really easy for me to, say click on this PDF file right here. What I'm going to do is click and hold it and what I'm going to do next, what's going to happen is this Google Drive that I do pops up that teachers are very familiar with, I can click on the download icon right here. Click download, I'll just queue up this download, download button right there. And then, yeah, now what I've done is accessed cloud-based storage, Google Drive, now set that file to this device. And if I go into, now I download the files, see the beach map looks filed, I've just downloaded today, it's right there. But I put that open, put that up right there, click this open. Populates up and right here to the XMPRC, there's that PDF file we grabbed from G-Drive, I'm now using this in the classroom. I can, if I want to pick up this bed and begin annotating on top, it's, yeah. Right, okay? That's one way that I can create and access it. Other reason I may want to grab a file from G-Drive, set it to the panel, so you're just working outside of G-Drive and stuff, okay? Um, I can connect your devices to this panel, right? From the field, same concept as you. Want to give this a shot and see what it looks like? All I'm going to do is click up with the Superbowl tab right here. And if you'd like, go ahead and take advice and give this a shot. Go to the website, haveaSmart.com. When you get out of Smart.com, go ahead and join as a guest and enter the class ID that you see up here, three, one, six, zero, six, you'll be brought into this session. Everybody just, uh, no more to go ahead and get logged in, so you take a look, let's clarify. Hi, it's the main panel, the first one, Delilah is it? Click Delilah. Ah, okay, okay, I'm sorry. I can lift the button.
Uh, I have a question. Yeah. Uh, you've downloaded it to the panel itself. I, will the panel, let's say for example, teachers have as a sub, can the sub access it from the panel or is there a wheelchair on it?
Sub could, yes, sub could, yes. If I wanted to, I can, and subs, we didn't have a time, I could download that file to fill itself, is, it's called guestbook, right? So I can even in my user profile. How do you feel? Okay, so we've got a few of us in here, so I'm going to go ahead and start sharing here. When I click the start sharing button, this will load up and then in just a moment, you'll see this populates on your device, okay? So that's just a minute and now on your device, you should be seeing this very file I have in right now. And as I think, you'll see those annotations roll through, right? So live, full time, you see that happening, okay? Hit the home page real quick here. It's on that home page, it's taking me back to this right here, this is what we call our IQ input, this is our version of that embedded operating system that comes with the panel. If I'm working off of this panel, I do not have to tie in a computer to the panel, okay? Always do that as an option if I want to, I can do it, click, second minute. Right now, I'm working just off the embedded system. So I'm going to go in and click open this whiteboard, okay? This pops up then and, uh, what I'm going to do, if you pay attention to this, the user interface looks very similar to what we just did with that PDF. So much so, I should. So much so, this action already I'll tie into this class. So if I click open the student roster here and start sharing the whiteboard, you'll now see this whiteboard being shared out. What I like about that is it was a seamless transition. You didn't have to ask for the sign-out, sign-back-in, or go to a different webpage or anything like that. It's all tied to that user profile of the teacher, right? So as we work through this here, go back in here, but pick up the pen, right? Because it's going to be a, you weren't right there. When I taught, I taught social studies, so that's the one, that problem. I'm listening to you, I'll probably do it two more times tonight, experiment with that place. But what you see, pick up the pen, I write, you see that flow through those devices, okay? Uh, again, pick up the pen and I can have multiple students writing on this, working at the same time. So I wanted to, but doesn't provide that out. Now, two students working on this, I'm able to use it, right? These panels support, uh, 20 simultaneous touchpoints. What we focus on though is not the number of touchpoints that the panel has, but the number of what we call simultaneous tools used at one time. Uh, meaning if I want to, I have multiple students, teacher, whatever up here, one meeting here, use a one moving just one around, or there, right, and this one blocking, there embracing that, and they're not finding each other, control, or controlling at the same time. Uh, we can continue building this out there. Go right down here, click up in this box, cross-reference through it. And if you take a look at this, uh, there are many ready-made activities inside of those applications, including our version of the pulling activity, like we call Shavad. Okay? So you're already in my class. We can go ahead and start this for the class. And, uh, after this, I'll drive you back to Denver, North Carolina. I need ideas where to grab dinner. If please just tell me, using your device, what is the best restaurant in the general cinema here in Denver, North Carolina? I can stop that and see. Okay? Again, just do that for your device real quick. You should see a text box that you can write your answer. Right below that, a send response button. And you'll, you'll see this popping up. So Delilah says, "All right." Hi, Delilah. Okay? Everybody, develop minutes to make a contribution here. And you'll notice, okay, right here, Bill Chab, Ryan Steakhouse. Okay, awesome. Texas Roadhouse, good, good. Okay? Houses are populating. What I can do, if I need to, is pause this activity. And at that time, when I hit pause, your screen grays up. Okay, so if I need to redirect the discussion inside classroom, I'm easily able to do so and say, you know what, I forgot to say nothing with the drive-through. I don't want to go anywhere tonight as a drive-through. So bear that in mind for your answer. Hit resume and you're back at answering this activity. Um, this is also devices, not just as web-based. So I can do this inside my classroom. I could be doing this virtually, hybrid. Uh, doesn't matter that networks are connected to. These answers are going to float through, okay? Uh, as we're going through this, I want to make any of these here in full screen. I'll do this, I can make that to the full screen, make that easier for our classroom discussion, okay? I'm just saying this too. I can organize these, I like categories, just kind of bring those around, village parks seems popular. Because I can like organize this, all of a sudden I've got this really cool way to foster a conversation or conversation about content we're going with. Right? Uh, and all of a sudden, you may say, Texas Roadhouse, what's with the village tavern? Uh, and you go, well, like, it's more like a crime scene, right? Whatever it is, it does foster those conversations and conversations, right? Going to continue to click through this, go back here, get working with this whiteboard application, different graphic organizers are available here. If I roll down to say the Sven diagram, like that. And we don't think teachers should spend a ton of time creating templates and that process, basically put a lot of those into the workflows. So this is in here, all I hear is teacher. Uh, this is a big week for me, this is discoveries, Shark Week, uh, I can't get enough of it. So if I want to do an activity on Sharks versus Wales, okay? So how easy that was to communicate and talk that, this is still flowing through through your devices, right? And then if I want to, say, easily from the, uh, whiteboard application, I want to look for a specific way of speaking. So what I can do with that, maybe with that image, run an image search for Wales. Out that, I'm simply going to click on the image and that then populates into the workspace here. Go ahead and do that one right there, that populates. So then if I need to click and resize that, roll that into Wales, okay? Uh, likewise, we'll just click this open, roll that into videos. Uh, so Smart Technologies has a long-suffering partnership with Google slash YouTube. Now our licensing agreement with them is that if you route YouTube videos through smart software, whether it's this package I'm showing you on the board right now, smart notebook or online lesson delivery software, there are no advertisements exchanged. It's no beginning, middle, end of ad, uh, video advertisements, no sidebar, no comments, this video then not autoplay onto the next video YouTube is assigned to this playlist, okay? Now, because, uh, I can now send this through to your devices that are still connected, I've just created, no matter where that student is, where they're on, a safe space for them to view this YouTube video without worrying about them getting into advertisements or anything that may pop up on YouTube, okay? Questions? Okay, good. We'll keep it on the bond here and one thing popping up here, this also, uh, we like to focus a lot on math activities built in, right? So if I roll up in this, and you go to that activity right here, uh, it's what we call a base head block activity, right? So I wanted to quickly show you how can we get to a sum of 21 using the information available to us here. Roll through the base of the class, grab the pen, get, send that off. Okay? All right.
How, how is this communicating? Is this through the same network or is this just network? So if I turned off internet and just went data, or if I had to hit a phone?
Yeah.
Am I still connected because of the code?
So this is also a network act, not, okay? So it doesn't matter if I'm here on the Stokes County network and you serve a code on your own network and you are on data on the cell phone, it's all going to flow through because it's web-based, it's not network dependent, okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Anybody else?
I'm done with questions. That's what makes it happen.
Okay. Uh, I want to hit on one thing real quick just because it came open, or it came up a moment ago during the, uh, the other demo. Let me go back in with this file library. And you see this, there's this little icon here called Lumeo. Uh, the details are not important, but it's part of the software package that we have offered to the district, okay? Essentially what Lumeo is, is an online lesson delivery software where I, as a teacher, can take various file types, be it smart notebook files, PowerPoints, Google Slides, PDFs. I'll plug it into this platform and then send them out to the devices. We're going to click this one, open it right here, okay? And what I'm going to do is grab, uh, this iPad, bear with me for a moment, as I, uh, put my code in and pop this up, okay? It's you. And come off to you is, go ahead and once I get in here, we'll start sharing this. Okay, all right, sometimes devices sign out after a moment, so this is just sign back in real quick here. And once he populates up, showing exactly what I mean. What I'm going to do is, you asked a question sort of earlier, can I drive a concept in my classroom from this device? And show you what that looks like. Let's open here. And I'm now sharing this file to your devices. So for those of you that are still signing in to this classroom, uh, watch this here. That's, as I change page on this device and drive a concept to this device, whether it's an iPad, a cell phone, a tablet, a notebook, whatever it is, this is reflected not only on the panel itself, but also on your device, okay? Uh, so much so that as I come in here, I wanted to then say grab this pen and ink, you can see that ink flow through panel on your device. I'm able to remote the drive, contact in my classroom, and let's get together, panel, we have to establish that connection, okay? Sometimes I get excited, careful with wires. Going to hit that, uh, home page one more time and bring up the page here. Um, again, we get asked all the time, you work with traditional applications, different math tools, the answer is yes, right? Uh, so you see I have some of them populated under my favorite applications on the scale. If I went to open, say Desmos or Geog, both of those up here. Click open Desmos here. Uh, this is a graphing calculator and watch this, as this opens up, the option here to input an equation. And I'm not going to, right, so if I want to, uh, say, uh, 2X, I've got my graph, I'm going to enter a, say, another expression here, uh, I'm going to do X squared for the grappler. I'm able to leverage different math applications and math tools all built into the panel and the software itself. Okay? Uh, just an idea of one of the applications on there. Uh, another thing built in there is also, uh, maybe people like Google Earth, right? I'm going to click up in Google Earth. And I was looking at this, scouting out my best vacation to beach here, right? I wanted to now get this around and say, look, this is fertile beach area, not familiar. Uh, you have peace and plantations right there if you want to go there, scout that out using Google, like checking out pyramids and videos, whatever it is with them. Okay? Uh, back to my home page here. Sure, one more thing on, again, what we call the IQ app, the embedded operating system for this smart board. That is, uh, on this one earlier, screen shield, right? It's an idea, can I cast devices, whether a teacher or student, to the panel? If I click that open right there, this is the main interface. And, um, we have, uh, two different securitys for screen sharing built into this panel. So, uh, one, I have to actually hit this button right here for this to activate, okay? And then two, uh, there are permissions built in to do screen sharing as well. So once a device is cast to us, the board sees that a device is trying to connect. Uh, what I have to do is actually accept permissions, it's in here, I have to hit yes, then from there, I can screen share. Uh, you should see that this does accept multiple devices casted at any one time. If I want my notes to be full screen, just click this open, uh, the lights are on, it's right there, the back, big beach lover. Uh, also, no judgment from the princess house, we're all here, we have a five-year-old princess who's always doing dance art, so that's why you sleep the rest of the day, it's 80 some hours and all that good stuff, okay? Uh, but that's how it happens. Various levels of permissions built in, so if Delilah were here, just hijack, I'd pop you and I answer your pass to it.
She'll try. She will try.
I know she will. I know she will. I, I certainly know she will. Okay? Uh, this is a little bit about how that works. Uh, want to show, uh, just a couple of things here, and I have a couple of questions. Uh, it's one of your very big Google districts, uh, Chromebooks are everywhere, a lot of students have Chromebooks. Uh, Smart Technologies was the first interactive touch display to bring touch and ink connectivity to Chromebook platform, okay? Uh, but that being said, if you wanted a teacher or student to take a Chromebook and connect to the panel with HU by cable, USB, uh, all I would have to do is make that connection, hit the input selector right here. And the cool thing about this is, uh, this is my, so this actually gives me a live video preview of that computer that's connected or that DVD player that's connected, whatever it is. Also going to tell me if that is a touchable input, all I have to do is click this open. This is going to carry you through over to, uh, this Chromebook that I have connected to right now. Just to give you an idea of what this interaction looks like, if I want to touch a geek on top this Chromebook input, so I'm, uh, working inside of, uh, this is Google Key, you know, uh, Google Key. Uh, all this is then is pick up the pen and hit, you got 2X equals 6, okay? So it got not only touch, but also geek abilities on top of a Chrome operating system. And that's Chromebook, Chromebox, uh, whatever cases, I have that built in, okay? Um, one more thing here, if I switch the input, show you what the, uh, method experience with PC looks like, if that's something you're interested in doing as well. And if I click this sign out, it's going to log me on to that panel. So I do have to switch the cables in the back there. Okay, if you're now seeing this live in the input, this PC is actually, if I click over here, this is going to carry over to this PC. And again, this could be, and you can see whether this is a PC module attached to the laptop, it's going to look at you just like this screen here. Mentioned, uh, you guys have used Smart for a long time, Smart notebook, uh, this is what Smart, getting this software again from Smart, like this one. If I wanted to, say, click this open, focus on shape of vision, again, more math tools built in here, wanted to buy this shit, it's going to use since equal sections, got that fractions in there, and all the pieces of this pizza out. Easy way to teach shape, division, fractions to my students, okay? Just an example of against the math features, look into the software. minimize this, go into this one right here and, uh, show you what this looks like. So I mentioned, uh, we're often smart with the Internet. See this? This is what smart with the Internet looks like. Uh, right now, this is the Smart Technologies domain, yours will look very similar to this in Stokes County school, okay? It's telling me in my fleet of deployed panels, there are 225 total devices, okay? I'm going to drill down and take a look at what that looks like. Just click right there, it's going to carry me into my device list, okay? Now, the cool thing about this is this is going to give you hardware ID or the serial number of that MX portal, that's the port, as well as the name, right? So this could be, uh, you know, North Stokes High School, room 205, right? Use that identification and click on that, right? So then, so if I do this one right here, I'll go over to the street, I'll maybe see the different options that I have available to, to this panel. I could take remote control, right? Meaning I take remote control of the panel from my central location at the admin office. So if North Stokes calls and says, hey, there's a problem with room 205, can you check it out? Uh, Karen, Delilah, whoever can actually remote log in and have full click access to that panel to diagnose the problem, right? I can install packages, applications, whatever, uh, broadcast messages, I have power control options for this as well, right? So I can manage my fleet of everybody I have, tell them all to go to sleep one time, ironic one time. We're gone for Thanksgiving break, I'm going to power everything down for, for the long weekend, okay? Uh, so that is a little bit, uh, about what that looks like and that, uh, smart management control system, uh, again, available to you, touch my hardware, uh, they must create groups, right? So I have the district group, North Stokes group, uh, middle school social studies group that I can drill down to as well, okay? There may be some packages that are appropriate for middle school social studies or not high school math, right? Okay? So, any questions? A time to go quick, we're trying to be respectful of the 30 minutes I was granted. I've survived a bit of lock into a short amount of time. There are any questions from the group that I can help with, sir?
Play a video.
Play a video, yeah, sure.
I just want you to play one because I want to hear the sound.
I hear the sound, okay, got it, got it. Let me, uh, open the video here. And I may have some trouble because I am on the network, they have 51 mode here. Let's go out to YouTube. And go ahead and say... Let's see, I'll stay where, it's from right there.
That face that is usually colored by a club has finally made an appearance. That face will be doing that if you weren't staying in a burrow like yours.
Built into this panel, uh, maybe hard to see on this side and this side, there is 15 watt speaker on each side. Uh, what we find for most K-12 type of classrooms... Uh, what we find for most K-12 classroom applications, depending on the structure of the room, because that's more than sufficient wattage for the classroom. Uh, other benefit to this is these are front faces. Uh, sometimes you get a panel with speakers put in the back. Uh, these are front faces, so all that sound is moving out towards the speakers.
Okay.
Anybody else? Just how is that certain?
Your technical assistance, like when you log in to fix something that we have a problem with software wise, water. That's no cost, right? That's under the seven-year remote management or is there a cost to that?
That, that's no, uh, no cost to that. That is, uh, what SMART is offering to the district with purchase, uh, for decisions before it is closed. Uh, complimentary, all-inclusive package. That includes, uh, access to what we call SMART Learning Suite software, which is, uh, SMART Notebook and our online lesson delivery software, but also SMART Remote Management. So we are, uh, attaching that to us. Yes, so there are. We're not in the business making applications. So virtually no application, we download a suite of devices to this. We're going to have to use, uh, web based, so that, uh, I can get on there and that's pretty much. Even like at one time, do this screen sharing, I should have the backup, uh, simple use of your plug. It doesn't support Chrome pass or Vr pass until that comes. So this will leverage native by screen sharing protocols, which is such a, uh, type of password. Uh, the other none of the password were all with this.
Have you turned off their app? Can you comment? Or, like, let me.
Full questions? I have the only same line. Any, any other questions? Uh, any, any other questions? It sounds a lot of. You think I'll listen to the board notes?
No, I'd like to thank the chairman for doing the presentation. It really was great. I liked the size of that board.
Yeah, 75 inches right here. Yep.
And, and the speaker come right up to the screen. So, you know, both technologies good, but it really is very nice.
No, no problem, no problem. So, yeah, one thing is 75 inches. Existing smart boards your teachers currently are using are mostly 77 inches. Uh, so the transition to 75 versus a different size, uh, is a very familiar feel for your teacher. But not going to turn real slow.
Hardware and peripherals, everything we have still works with everything we're looking at.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Web, the webcams, everything.
Desktops. Webcams, desktops, uh, speakers, this has audio out, need to run this long out, but yeah. Those are the, uh, computer components, uh, few as needed, all that other work.
And then availability.
Availability, yeah, yeah. Uh, these are the models, yeah, everybody's having a child right now. Uh, to be real, we are probably looking at a August, September timing.
Okay.
Updates coming today is just, it's ranging below the supply chain right now, but realistically, I would, even as a side caution, be more comfortable saying September, just because I don't want to steer any.
Of 2021, right?
Of 2021, yes, 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 yes.
Go to a car dealer, ask that same question and ask the year.
Yeah. Appreciate your inquiry. I just, uh, just, I just thought I could give you part of what, we actually bought a new home in, uh, January. And I have a house for national furniture and I'm back for some months. I still get some months back with it, but any, anything else? If not, uh, yeah.
Sorry, question. Um, okay, can you cover the warranty for that?
Yes.
So the license limits, it also the basic plus the online parts is all together or who are on?
Uh, uh, we don't base this, uh, we offer.
Online?
Yeah. We offer making, we produce, it is all little. We end online, it's all convenient.
Uh, because that's considered the one suite, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
We're simply. Right, and it's just a smart change, what's it?
About four, four.
Uh, tape or?
Yes, yes.
What?
Yeah, so, uh, SMART loves not manufacturing purple nuts. However, a real idea, sort of sense kind of maybe you have access to your mountain batteries, you sell purple nuts. You place the MS gears onto a purple nut and, uh, send them sort of. Is there a question right here?
Previously, you began with a, the three main that you're seeing. This is the board's thinking about our wire information today, instead of wireless.
I was all wireless.
So the board's not blocking it?
It hasn't got a wire, yeah.
And how is it that we can train that model to walk on wireless?
Oh, it's crazy. Uh, well, it's, it's internal bit within the series. It is inside the system and out that is being, vice versa, through automatic here. So they are our current updates, we have to, has to be separate because we're almost out of automatic today, there are some. So it's nothing that's, maybe itself.
And it's hardware failure?
It's a hardware failure built into the panel itself. We just aren't able to answer.
And one more question, when the board is saying, well, well, do you have an area that you can, um, they can stop things? This is us, good.
Yes, yes.
To be compliant with the, um.
Yes, because in, within these things itself, you can solve specific issues. Uh, on the boundary, through town, deep county, all these offices, areas, we have to, uh, we reach out some of the, of the, of the.
Is there a centralized, um, forum that, uh, that app?
Yes, so you have the remote management forum, you're just working it, push the C scale or specific. You have a new management forum, so you can take the, the after parts and send them to the district. Thank you everyone so much for your time. I really appreciate it. You're great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. That is all I have on the boards tonight.
Thank you and your staff.
Yes, sir.
Everything you've done too.
Yes, sir, and thank you all for coming. At the board. I just wanted to say that the two companies here that shared, uh, the boards this evening, we are very grateful and thank you for your time. It was wonderful. Thank you so much. And if you want to work while we are talking board work and, and move your stuff, you're welcome to do so because I know you've had a really long day. I mean, you know, we don't want to hold you up. Um, but we'll continue on then with our next discussion item, discussion of policy 5000 series.
Board, in your Google Drive, you have the, uh, new policy for the 5000 series. Uh, again, we will vote on that next month. And once you have questions, I'll turn over to Mr. Johnson for any input.
We've just received those tonight. We've just received those tonight, so they will be, I'll be reviewing those. We'll discuss those in detail next week.
All right, thank you for that information. Uh, any questions regarding any of these policies, board? Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion of the revised Stokes Early College Calendar.
Board members, in your, your packet, you see a revised calendar for the early college for the 2021, 22 school year. If you'll remember, last school year, the state mandated that we add five additional days to the calendar, student days, that is. That is no longer the case for the upcoming school year. The original calendar for the early college included those five days. We've since taken those out and have revised that, um, in the calendar before you reflects those changes.
The main difference between this and the other calendar that you approved earlier, uh, the ending date of school moved from May 20th to May 13th. It just added five workdays. Again, a, as he said, when those five days were added in last year, that's what the early college and Forsyth Tech had put together. Uh, since then, we've realized we do not need those five days, so that put the five workdays back in there. Uh, are there any questions about that? If possible, we'd like to move that to action tonight so that we can go ahead and get that published.
I'll make a motion that we move that to action.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh, we will make that, um, excuse me, action.
D.
D. The early college calendar. Next, we have discussion of window replacements, Mr. Goines.
Yes, board members, uh, in your packet, you should have the prioritized window replacement information. What I would like to do, we, I confirmed this with Ms. Moore, we're going to get this Ursa money over a three-year period, an allotment, uh, each year for three years. What I would like to do is take this priority list and do the first two schools, which is Sandy Ridge and Pinnacle. And how I came up with this priority list is, first of all, I looked at elementary schools. Uh, I looked at the buildings that was built in the 1950s and the 1960s and then also that had an enrollment of, uh, more than 150 students. Um, so with the board's, uh, permission, I would just like to go ahead and start on those two schools, get the, uh, engineer on board and get those bid out to see what the, the, the cost comes back. But for the material costs to stay in time, I would be just nervous trying to project the cost of what it'd be today and especially three years from now. And also at the last meeting, I told the board that we had $2 million for window replacements and I was wrong. And speaking that, we only have $1 million in Ursa funding for window replacements.
Is that over a three-year period?
Yes, ma'am.
The 1 million?
Yes, ma'am. Any questions?
Is that something you need moved as well to action?
No, I think it's just information I can.
Information.
He will put the stuff out for bid and then the board will bid on the, or vote on the bids.
All right, thank you.
If you're okay with this plan of looking at these two first, then he can get started with engineers.
Yes, sir.
I'm fine with the fence.
You want to go ahead and do the fence now?
As well, you're up there.
Okay. Uh, what we looked at, uh, we carried a contract up to Pine Grove and where the, the trees have grown over at the football field is getting those cut back. Uh, we're looking at probably going up about 15 feet, 15 to 18. He said that's about what he could reach, cutting it back. We're also going to look at the baseball and softball field while we're there and just cut them all back while we're there.
When you're cutting them back, are you just going straight up?
Straight up.
Not going away from the fence?
Because it, no, because at the, there's nowhere to put it, especially at the football, uh, because it's, it's a slope and you'd have to start at the bottom and come up or either that or just drag them out beside the fence. There's nowhere to really put the material, so we're just taking the limbs off.
Beats nothing, uh, this is brought up, we looked at it and some of the branches are pushing us to fence so we can spend $5, $10,000 now or $100,000 in tents later. Right. Done, no brainer. Wondering how much more it'd cost to fix, to put a permanent fix to it instead of have to go back.
Meaning remove them completely.
When it grows back.
Yeah.
And redo it again.
Well, to my knowledge, I don't know that it's been grown, I mean, then cut back since the school's been built.
Well, we were told that the former athletic director custodian, somebody there had been doing it in the past.
Okay, I know from this department, we haven't talked about.
That's what the athletic.
Sorry, try to speak into the microphone, Mr. Bryant.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The former athletic director was doing the task he's since moved on. Hasn't been done, it's got to be done.
The advantage of the baseball and softball, you can get behind the fence to work at that long edge of the football. You really don't have room. You only have in some areas a couple of feet and then it's.
Right.
It's a, it's a good slope that goes off of it.
Can I just suggest then, give us a price, get us a price for cutting them down or cutting them back?
Okay.
Because either way, we got to come up with the money and we got to go beg that Lynette because.
I'll do both.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Goines. Next, we have item E, discussion of Fox Hire LLC EC Speech Language Pathologist Contract.
Yes, board, this is a contract for speech therapists, um, that's shared between Pine Hall and Sandy Ridge. We tried to stay with our other companies, but they could not find any ones. We had to reach out and, and go with another company, uh, to hire that or contract that service out.
Does this company, you said that you reached out so it comes highly recommended by other districts?
Yes, so we, we, well, we, we try to find as many people that they work with the county. This actual person that's coming is coming to, up to us from Cabarrus County, I believe. So they've worked within the county and of course we called that county and they had good things to say. Um, Mr. Johnson has seen the contract and I know I'd like to move it to approval tonight so that the person can get started as soon as possible when, when school gets started next week, next month.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And if, uh, Mr. Johnson's reviewed it and good with it, um, that's good. Is anybody interested in moving this to action? Or would we like to further review? I mean, I think what time is of the essence because it's July and you need it starting next month.
Yes, please.
Make a motion, we move it to action.
Thank you.
I have a second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? We'll move that to action, item E. Thank you.
Board, the next item, uh, is about the YVETI Head Start Agreement. Uh, at this time, and I'll ask Ms. Collins to hang around at the podium to make sure that I'm getting some of these details correct. Uh, we have space for 17 people at the Head Start Program at London. We have two models working with Head Start right now. One is the model that we have at London where we are hiring the teacher and teacher assistant, their employees of Stokes County Schools. And Head Start gives us money per child as a reimbursement model. It doesn't fully reimburse us. We have to use some local funds to make up the, the difference, but that's that model. The other model we're using is at Mount Olive where that is a true Head Start Program run by Head Start, staffed by Head Start. They pay us rent for the room and the facility. And so there's, when they do Head Start, they verify the quality of teachers that meet their standards. When we do Head Start, we do our teacher standards. Uh, there is a pay difference in the two. And so that's the two models we have. The issue we're having right now is as of this morning, we have eight students signed up for London. With the reimbursement model, we are losing over half the funding in that facility. Uh, again, we can hold 17 and only eight are signed up. Ms. Collins has talked with Head Start, uh, about the situation. We've talked about can we have it with one staff member instead of two due to the low numbers, even though we do see some issues with that. Um, anytime you're dealing with children that young, somebody may need to go in an emergency type situation. And we could work through some of that possibly with the school, with some other staffing at times. But after discussing this with Head Start, we are looking at moving to the Mount Olive model at London. We are still working through the agreements, MOUs, working through that paperwork. But we wanted to have that discussion with you so that you were aware of what we're talking about as Ms. Collins moves through this process further and get your input and after we let you know what this situation is. Are there questions that you have right now for Ms. Collins or my, or Ms. Collins? Did I, Ms. Moore, did I say that correctly in, in y'all's worlds? Okay. But it's coming out of other funding streams for us, yes. Okay, thank you for that correction.
So you can't combine the pre-K and the Head Start? You can, but we won't be getting the reimbursement funds because there are so many empty spots at that location. We currently only have eight in a, in a classroom that holds 17. And if we don't get those slots filled, then we have to come up with another $65,000 that we don't, that we would normally get if those slots were filled. Does that make sense? Well, well, it does, but, um, um, explain to me why you couldn't use some four-year-olds with the three-year-olds, like for a pre-K? So, so four, three-year-olds are not NC pre-K eligible? They have to be four-year-olds, so we, we wouldn't get that funding either. Oh, you wouldn't get the funding for the eight? Not for the NC pre-K, no. Okay, but you would for the, if you had 10 more, you'd get the funding for those 10? Just, just for the money that Head Start's giving us. That would be the only other money we would be able to get. So it wouldn't be viable? No. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What kind of marketing efforts have went out, or communications to the community?
So that goes through Head Start. They recruit for that classroom, as well as the one at Mount Olive.
So they scout out, you know, families with those age children and send them something in the mail?
Yes, and so we did-
They use WIC, they use the, those rosters, so they use other methods to identify.
Mailers.
Yeah. NC pre-K sends out the postcards to every family in Stokes County. We have signs up, we put it on our website, we did a bright arrow. We did put it on Facebook.
And you advertise this for three-year-olds?
We just advertise it for pre-K, for anybody who would sign up, and then they check, they check the eligibility of the people that apply.
At the-
At NC pre-K.
Yeah. So has that reached out to Ronda Rand?
Sure. That's Head Start, yes.
Yeah, she's Head Start, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't think that you had had several to apply that were not eligible, maybe, and turned away or something, like not meeting a certain?
So, yeah, so Head Start does have a, their income threshold is 130% of the poverty level. So, you know, we did look around at our other preschools and see, what they do when they apply is they put a first, second, and third choice. So we try to look around and see, so who's going to qualify for a Head Start, and we try to pull those in first. So we do look around and see if we can pull all those in first before, you know, that's kind of, there'll be no more choices, because they don't meet the income threshold.
And so under this model, we will still have a Head Start at London. It will just not be, it will be run through Head Start instead of Stokes County Schools. But the program would still be available there.
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
We're not closing a program. We're just cha, cha, excuse me, changing the management of the program.
Right. Makes sense.
Any other questions about that?
Does this need to be moved to action?
It's not an action item right now. Again, we're still looking at the MOU and all that. We just wanted you informed, in case you're at a Partnership for Children meeting or something, and it's mentioned, we wanted, or it's mentioned in the community, we wanted y'all to have a heads up and to know what was going on.
And we have an NC pre-K committee meeting tomorrow afternoon, so this will be discussed at that meeting as well.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have discussion of budget amendments.
In your packet, you have several amendments. The first one you have is for the State Public School Fund. Really, there's no change in the amount. It's just allowing co-transfers for the year end, as expenditures actually happen by the different PRC and object codes. The next amendment you have is Current Expense Fund II. That actually decreased our budget by $33,115.21. And the major change there is a decrease in fines and forfeitures. That comes through the county, and of course, due to COVID, we did not receive as much money through the clerical court. So that's just kind of out of our control from year to year. So when we actually budgeted for this coming year, we did decrease what we thought we might be receiving. So that's the major reason for that decrease in your Fund II. Federal Amendment Number Four, it's actually a decrease of $223,451. Our federal money drops at different times from DPI. And basically, as you can see here, the different PRCs, the major change here was where we received some funding for our EC program. Applications have to be filed, and that's approved later in the year. So that's why you're actually seeing those additional funds with the different programs. And that's just based on what we received at the time from DPI. Capital Outlay, Budget Amendment Number Two, an increase of $8,695.05. And the basic reason for this increase would be because some additional endowment money we received from Wachovia, and a little change in our interest, a slight decrease there. Then Amendment Number One, Child Nutrition, an increase of $549,981. And the major change here was the summer feeding program. And when they estimated the revenue there, it was assumed that maybe, or estimated on the fact of the COVID year, and we were not actually in school with students, and as we started back, we received additional revenue there. Current Expense Fund Number Eight, increase of $177,528.81. All during the year, we have to estimate what we receive from Medicaid. And you can see the increase for the two types of Medicaid program there. And basically, that's just when they audit and we receive funding. Again, we have to estimate that to the end of the year, not knowing exactly what we might receive. On E-rate, that's a decrease. They changed the way that was funded. We actually received that money through the state this year, so that's the reason we see the change there. And then the other items are just a slight increase and decrease. Interest decreased. We did receive some additional driver ed tuition money that was anticipated at the beginning of the year. And then we appropriated some fund balance from our Fund A, just to match some of the Head Start, the E-rate, and the Medicaid difference. And again, all of these at the end of the year is allowing co-transfers. Just to cover our actual expenditures.
Do you need this moved to action tonight?
Yes, probably so, because our audits are coming.
Make a motion, move it to action.
Oh, second.
Alright, thank you so much, gentlemen. All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh, we will make that Item E, Budget Amendments. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Thank you.
Um, is Ms. Moore going to talk about the, what we got from the county commissioners?
Yes, I believe this is next, the finalized budget.
And in your packet, right Pam, they were, the, I included a sheet that I've summarized for the board that's simplified from the sheet that was actually in the packet in the beginning, so-
Was that on our table?
Should look like this form here.
It has the paper slip.
Called the Current Expense Budget Approved by County Commissioners.
And it's red on the bottom, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have it.
Did you say you laid it at their place?
Looks like this.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, no.
Look in there, look in right here.
Oh, okay, we'll be looking here.
She's found it.
Let me find it.
This just makes it a little bit simpler to file. Board of Education's request to the county commissioners in current expense was $14,981,977. That was your final approval request to the commissioners. The final approval from the commissioners was $14,667,109. That's actually a decrease of $314,868. I went ahead and broke down the county funding, and when I say county funding, that's the funding that they appropriate from their monies up there. And then you can see the school system revenue, the part that we actually included in our budget, to come up with our total request. In red, I have put the recommended cuts by the county commissioners. And really, the county commissioners do not actually get into line items. That's a Board of Education's decision. But as they went through the budget, these were some things they recommended that you all might possibly look at. And one of those was to cut the instructional coach, which would be $84,868. And the other one, this board had asked to increase the certified classified supplement by five, from 4% to 5. And they are recommending cut it back from 5 to 4.5, and that was a cut of $230,000. So those two line items actually were all the things that they cut to come back to you $314,868. So overall, it is a good budget, in my opinion, when you look at the amount that we have to look at tonight to decide which way you want to go with that.
Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir.
I just want to be clear that, so the, we asked for a increase in the supplement for the teachers from 4% to 5%?
Yes, sir.
And the county commissioners sent it back to us, and they suggested that we cut it back to 4.5%?
Yes, sir. They did give an additional high percent increase, correct.
They cut it a half percent, is that correct?
From your request, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You want to go on to-
At this point, Board, we can follow their recommendation, and we have added, with this, we would add an elementary instructional coach, we would be able to add the halftime public information officer grant rider. The other requests that we have asked for, we would be able to do all of that. And we would lose the secondary instructional coach that we've asked for and the other half percent. Or you can take their total amount and figure out something else. You may say, you know what, the other instructional coach is more important than the PIO grant rider. Those monies would, we could, you know, work around on those type things. So while the commissioners made this recommendation, it is still the board's authority to use the total amount given to come up with a budget. So that is, that is what is facing the board this evening in this discussion, is to decide whether or not we want to follow the commissioners' recommendation, or if this board feels strongly about something else, you could look to do that as well.
And of course, at this time, we've not heard anything from the state as to what might happen to-
Correct.
Salary increases, benefit increases, and that kind of thing, so that's still pending.
So do we have $230,000 in budget if we so judge the allocation?
From your fund balance, you would, sir? Yes, sir.
How bad depleted would we be following?
I'm sorry, how bad depleted would we be?
What would remain in the fund balance?
At this time, I'm estimating that you'd probably have like 2.6, $2,600,000. We do still have payables coming in, so everything's not quite final yet. And basically, the reason your fund balance has increased is because of the federal money that we received. And we were able to move custodial salaries from our state and local to offset, because there was not a supplanting issue with those positions. So as a result of that, by moving those, we freed up local money. So over $1 million of that funding actually helped towards your fund balance. When you ended last school year, we had right at $800,000, so the two of them together, and then any extra that you had for this year. So that's why you've been able to increase the fund balance, and it's the best we've had in several years.
And the reason we did that was not knowing what this school year or next school year could possibly be. I mean, if we were ordering Clorox by the pallets again this year, like we were last year, we got money last year, but not this year. So we were able to save some for a rainy day if needed. At this point, it looks like we're okay, and we're not going to need all the equipment materials we needed last year. We still have a good supply of cleaning supplies, and we will cut back on some of that due to the restrictions being cut back. So we saved money and, for a rainy day, and it didn't rain as hard as it could have.
So what other, what other monies do we think we may have to take from that fund balance?
Well, right now, based on what the commissioners have approved, unless something major changes at the state level, you have not appropriated any of your fund balance, the balance of the budget.
But as the year goes along, on a typical year-
On a typical year, we normally have not had to do so. Even though we added some things this year because of COVID, like the athletics, we still did not have to use fund balance. So typically, we have been budgeting close enough that we've come out okay.
Ms. Moore and I, we've not talked about it and verbalized it like this, so please correct me if I'm wrong. Every year, we try to plan worst-case scenarios. And then anything that happens better than that, we're able to save a little money. Where some school districts try to plan to the bare minimum, and then anything that happens, they have to go to fund balance. So in several years, we've not had to go to fund balance during the middle of the year, because of, it's not a padded budget, it's just, as she said, we don't know what the state may say with teacher raises right now. If they come up and say, it's, we planned on 5%,
Yes, sir.
Trying to be conservative. If they say it's an 8% raise, every locally paid position, we're down 3%. Well, as you know, last year, there were no raises. They didn't pass a budget. So while we planned for a 5% raise, it didn't happen. So we had some savings there. And so we typically don't have to go there because of, Ms. Moore and I are pretty conservative, and try to make sure that we don't go in the red every year. And that worked before my time, and it's worked since I've been here.
Normally, when we build a budget, we do not pad the budget. We try to be as accurate as we possibly can, based on the information we had.
But there's unknowns.
There are unknowns. And for example, for example, if the state gave a 3% raise, where we had figured the 5, then there could be savings.
Right.
But we figured retirement at a rate, it could be higher, or it could be lower. So I'll give you an example now, insurance. Some of our insurances have already come in a little higher than we budgeted. But overall, I still think we'll be okay, especially dealing with the cybersecurity. That's one that's really going to probably be increased.
If electrical costs or gas costs, if a pipeline shuts down and our gas prices double, there could be an issue there that we may have to go to. But if it doesn't, then we'll be fine, and we won't have to go into savings. We're not planning going into savings this year.
A cost of cybersecurity increase, right?
Which we're anticipating. We've been working on that. Karen's had to provide a lot of information. So they have told me that we would expect an increase in that, so I'm waiting for those policies to come in.
Okay. I just want us to be well-prepared for that, because that's very important, especially with all this additional technology.
And some of the things that we've had to do, the two-factor authentication for signing in, which we know is a headache, that will keep our insurance rates down, because it keeps us more protected. So we're being proactive and trying to do those things to keep that cost down, while keeping our coverage up.
And can you tell us, tell us again, the fund balance?
I'm anticipating, and this is not a final figure, because like I told you, we still have invoices and things coming in that we will set up as payables to be paid against the June 30th. But I'm saying you'll have, should have somewhere between $2,600,000 or $2,700,000, somewhere in that range. And I can give you a pure example of unknowns. Duke Energy has been off with all their billing. Right now, I think they're missing a month, and we've been in conversation back and forth and back and forth. You're talking over $100,000. But again, that's something that's, we're working on, but it's just those kind of things that reason I can't give you an accurate, to-the-penny figure on your fund balance.
So with your experience, if we, if we were to pull the $314,868 from the fund balance and make our budget old, is that, is that risky on your, in your view?
For what I'm seeing now, that would not be, if you'd asked me in the years prior to that, I would say, no, we cannot do that.
Well, the other question to that is long-term commitment. If we fund a position, this instructional coach position, at $84,000, well, and combine the two, at $314,000. In three years, if we keep committing to this and never get any extra funding, a million of that money's going to be gone. In six years, $2 million of it would be gone. So the question is, do you make a long-term commitment without funding to back it up? And so I've heard talk that the commissioners may want to do the other half percent next year. If that's a one-year deal, yes, this'd be really easy. But if we commit to our employees a 5% supplement, and they never do that, that's going to be a $230,000 hit every year. It's not, for one year, absolutely, we could pay it, but it's what would we do next year, and the next year, and the next year? The same thing with this position.
You'd have to be asking them for that additional funding-
Right.
If wants your fund balance running. Yes, sir, that's correct.
And in respect to the teacher-coach, we have had them before, and we have phased them out. So if we, if we commit to fund this for the three years, to try to bridge that educational gap that COVID has created, it should not be a problem if in three years, we don't have the funding, then they go back into the classroom as a normal teacher would.
Correct.
Problem solved. As far, and my conversations with county commissioners are, they will fund it next year. So I've got no problem making it hold this year.
I don't have a problem with it either, because they said that they would, I mean, they hinted to the fact that they would possibly pick that up as the 5% next year. So I, I really think of all the years and all the budgets I've sat through, this is the best budget that we've had since 2012, when I got on the board. And I honestly think that the employees deserve that 5%. And, you know, I'm fine with the teacher-coach also. But I truly do think, as hard as everyone has worked, every single- But I truly do think as hard as everyone has worked, every single employee of Stokes County Schools have worked so hard and have dedicated themselves. I honestly think they deserve that money, and it's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And I just feel like they deserve it, I do.
I think that we need to fund the five percent for sure with the simple fact that it's going to be two hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars per person according to what they make. I mean, that's a pretty good ballpark figure. In the grand scheme of things, that's not a whole lot of money with the cost of inflation and all. You go to the grocery store and stuff, some of these people are having a real hard time to survive and, uh, they're doing us a heck of a job. I think they deserve it.
Make a motion, we move the budget to action, making it a whole lot of fund dollars.
I'll second.
Funding the three fourteen eight sixty-eight to make it whole, correct, okay? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? We will move that to action then.
The capital funding was funded fully at the, the board's recommendation of, do we assume then that that is still your recommendation to follow through with that priority list or move forward with that?
Yes, sir.
And I just went ahead and listed those same projects like you all had put in your priority order to, to the commissioners, just where you would have it on the same document.
Thank you. So we will make that action item G, the finalized budget, including, um, the amount we mentioned to keep the teacher-coach position as well as the much-needed, uh, salary or supplement increase for staff. Item G. Next is discussion of school nursing services.
In your packet, excuse me, you'll see the contract and MOU between the Stokes County Board of Education and the Stokes County Health Department to provide funding for three full-time nurses. This is part of the SNFI, or School Nurse Funding Initiative, grant, um, that was enacted by the General Assembly some years ago. This has been around for approximately ten years, so it should be nothing new to you. Mr. Johnson has reviewed these documents and can provide any answers to questions you have, or I'd be happy to do that as well.
Any questions, board? Any concerns regarding the nursing services? Is this demand or need growing from last year or has it decreased?
Well, the, the demand comes from this grant, again, as he said, it's been around for like ten years. The Department of Health and Human Services looked at school districts and tried to offer additional monies to get us closer to the desired ratio of seven hundred and fifty students per school nurse. This did not do that, but it did provide funding for almost three nurses. Uh, we, we do three nurses, we have to pick up a little bit locally because they've said a budget number of fifty thousand dollars per. And so, uh, we get three nurses out of this with adding a little money to it. It did not change during COVID, it is the same contract ratios that we had before COVID. But without this money, uh, we would be down three nurses. So we, we want to get you to, at our next meeting, approve the contract and the MOU so that we can keep those three nurses.
I noticed the, the date there.
It is, that's effective a school year business here, July first, all, but we're okay because, you know, students don't return until August.
Okay. All right, any questions by the board? Then we'll move on to discussion, um, of the Stokes County Department of Social Services.
Yes, ma'am, the next document is an MOU, uh, between Stokes County Department of Social Services and the Board of Education to provide transportation services to foster care, students that are in foster care and, and may be placed outside of their assigned school district. If the team, being DSS, teachers, foster parents, feel that it's in the student's best interest to stay in the school of origin, then we will provide transportation for that student.
All right, any questions?
We will have that one in the action at our next meeting as well.
All right, thank you so very much. Um, then we'll move on to the action agenda because I feel like we discussed the fencing project already.
Yeah, we discussed fencing. Ma'am Chair, I suggest we go back to A because we took our two inputs and we never discussed it. We took the two presentations. Ms. Barker is going to be sitting there tomorrow going.
Yeah.
You know what, I'm no closer to getting. So here's what I'm going to cut to the chase, and I'm going to make a suggestion that we have ClearTouch and Smart, what, seventy-five inch monitors? I think we're all in agreement. Give us a price for monitors in a quantity by five hundred, and what's it going to take to install them? And give us a price, and then if you want associated tables or chairs or folding options, let us know how many you're looking at because in the end, we're going to have to approve one point five million. And it, you know, that's hard to say, it's easier if you say it real fast. But we need to get off, off this. And then by the next meeting, hopefully you'll have quotes, you'll have install costs. We can look at them a week, hopefully it won't take them over a week to give us pricing. And then by August second, we'll throw it straight to action.
Right. And just, you know, include it in our packet, if they can turn around the quote that quickly, that would be great.
But I mean, that's my personal.
For each ClearTouch and Smart, the six hundred monitor, five thirteen, the needed monitors that will be at that meter and school installation and needed equipment.
Do, uh.
They haven't given any quotes or price list.
Right here.
Yeah, they have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Is that what this is?
We get a bid, see the bid for five hundred and thirteen, that, that price will come back.
The, uh, on the ClearTouch, some of them had the little stand she showed at the very end. Do they take the sixty-five inch instead of the seventy-five? Is that the smaller monitor for the stand? They were.
But will the seventy-five become a table, I think is your question?
Yeah.
Because they showed it as a forty-two.
As well, okay.
Is that a sixty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the seventy-five better. I think for a room, it's easier to see from the back of the room, but for a table, I didn't know if, uh, if we could do some of the sixty-fives for tables and some of the smaller kids.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, I like the table model.
Then Ricky pulling the Smarts off the wall and putting, taking seventy-seven down, putting the seventy-five up, is that going to cause an aesthetically unpleasing void in the classrooms? I don't know how they're hung.
Shit. I doubt our walls have been painted since.
Okay. What do you think?
Who would install that?
Yeah, they would install it.
That would be a question, during the install, does that include taking down the others for us? Or would we need to go around and take down all of them to discard and all that? So does installation include removing the others?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, it's good, if it does, then we don't know. But we need to, we need to nail all those down and we need to get a price quick.
When we put it out for deals to say remove, install, and the equipment.
Well, before we dispose of, we have a thing called Gov Deals that Ricky is the king of.
Yeah, we need to move quickly because we're not the only district that's ordering all this.
And like the one gentleman said, September.
You know, orders are coming in all the time, and so we don't need to sit on this very long. We have a lot of information that you'd already gathered.
And while our staffs have a preference by their boot.
I think.
More than likely, if we gave them a met answer tonight.
They're both very impressive.
I know. Could you give them an answer tonight?
Well, we'd be better off, once we get the pricing, to hold the board versus wait until the next week.
This then, how long will it take you to get the money? I mean, to get the money, the numbers back, Karen?
And the staff survey or the ones that did participate, they recommended, what was their overall choice? Okay, okay.
Brad, seventy-two hours on electronic meeting notice and we're forty-eight. So technically, we could have a meeting Wednesday night, Thursday morning, electronic meeting, review the bids.
Invite on it, you're correct. Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to rush the board.
No, but I would prefer to, uh, to rush the board and go in and get our order in.
We have to put it out for the senior, not the past two months. Right. So we have, we have to post it now. Is there a length of time it has to be posted?
Seven days.
Seven days has to be posted for seven days.
Okay.
So if we get the bid posted tomorrow, the earliest we could do it is a week from tonight.
Let's do that.
But we could go ahead and schedule, we have to, but we could start advertising that meeting now as well and say, you know, next Monday night, next Monday, we have a meeting in the School Board Association during the day, three of us. And so we could set a meeting like at seven o'clock that night electronically. We should be able to be back or go in through a phone or something to connect.
Right.
Have a meeting next Monday night at seven o'clock to. Well, no, because if it goes out Tuesday, it happens at least two times, a week on Tuesday.
Seven days from the first day of publication, so.
Tomorrow, Tuesday.
We need to, we need to, we need to send a journal, it's the quickest paper to get in. They probably can't do it before Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday. So you're talking seven days from now.
So if you're talking, and we've got our little calendar, are you looking at the twenty-third, twenty-second or twenty-third? That's Thursday or Friday on the phone, Wednesday possibly, the twenty-third.
Okay, well, this sounds like a plan and if we can just communicate.
Let, let us check on that stuff. We may be looking at an electronic meeting either Friday the twenty-third or Monday the twenty-sixth. Just kind of looking at this, kind of guesstimating, uh, for one item agenda to approve that. But let us see what we can do tomorrow, and then we'll get with Ms. Knight and the rest of the board to find out what the earliest we can do legally with waiting for our time plan. It'd be one week earlier than our August second meeting.
Right, I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
Uh, doing just an electronic meeting.
Yes, to get this.
Just for this.
Yes, once we have the final numbers and a choice is made.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to action. Um, item A, approval of personnel and coaching report, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Next, we have item B, approval of policy four thousand B series, is there a motion to approve? Or any discussion, I should say. If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Uh. Any opposed, that passes. Next, we have approval of student handbook.
Make a motion to approve student handbook as presented.
I second it.
All right, all those in favor? Uh. That carries as well. Next, we have item D, the EC. Early College Calendar.
All right, I, I make a motion to approve the Early College Calendar.
All right, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor? Uh. Uh. Next, we have item E, the speech pathologist contract, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Uh. Any opposed? That carries as well to approve that contract. Next, we have item F, the budget amendment as presented by Ms. Moore.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment as approved by Ms. Moore.
Thank you, is there a second?
I will.
Who gets it, Mr. Rogers?
Oh, I don't care.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers, all those in favor? Uh. Any opposed? That carries as well. We have the finalized budget for item G, um, with the additional funding to fill the gap there and make it whole.
Motion to approve.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Ms. Messick. Thank you, all those in favor? Uh. Next, is that it? I believe I've come to the end of the line there. And we have information and announcements which we can either just read at our leisure, that'll be fine, I really appreciate it.
Correction in tonight's materials, if you will, on the individual school schedules, there was a change at Mount Olive to match up with King and Tenth School. And that affects the teacher reporting time and the end of the daytime to make that in line with the other schools in that district, other than Papa Springs, which is only ten minutes.
So a seven-thirty reporting time, seven forty for students, seven thirty for staff, okay.
So it just comes in line with two of the other school packages.
Um, well, yes.
All right, um.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Uh. I appreciate everyone and hope you have a great evening, thank you all.
And is this Mr. Langford's last meeting with us?
This is Mr. Langford's last.
Brad, I want to thank you for all your hard work. It's been a pleasure getting to know you, it's been a pleasure.